We are opening the regular meeting of the planning commission for August 19th.
I close allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Kevin, what's your call please?
Patterson.
Here.
Shaw.
Here.
Patajazak.
Here.
Lemieux.
Here.
And Grant.
Okay.
I'm here.
Okay, so then the first thing is the agenda. And I have an addition that I'm going to add, we will make it. Item. Let's make it eight A, we're going to do another assigning of an address.
Eight A?
Yeah, that way we can take care of the leads here.
Signing of the address?
Okay, so if anybody's got anything else, any questions on additions, anything? No, we're looking for that motion.
Motion to approve the village of our made up planning commission agenda for August 19th, 2004 is amended.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. And the meeting minutes, if everybody looked over the meeting minutes, Patty you will not be able to vote on this one.
No, I'm just gonna read it.
Okay, um, if you guys have looked all over that, any questions, anything concerns? If not, next motion.
Motion to approve minutes of the village of our made up planning commission for July 15th, 2024 is amended.
Support.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, any public comment that doesn't pertain to the items that we're going over tonight? Nothing? Okay. We are on the sketch plan application for 74130 Fulton, which is the CTR Customs. Chase, if you want to give us a little bit of a background about this?
Um, so I am starting a new automotive shop in what was previously Wyatt Performance. We are running it pretty much the same way, nothing's changing, nothing about the building is changing. We're just changing ownership, so.
Okay, did everybody get that plan?
Back here.
Yeah, okay. Any questions, concerns? Nothing for Chase? I do have one thing. I was informed that there is a Facebook post that states you are open for business and running.
Oh yes, correct, we were, which I was mistaken about.
Because we're not your last stop, you know that, right? Even after tonight, you're still not ready to open.
That is news to me.
Okay. Well, let's keep it moving forward and I'll get you everything that you're gonna need.
Okay.
So there's no changes, he's just moving right into the building that's already there, using the equipment that's there?
Oh yes, correct.
Okay, and you're aware of all the stipulations that we went through with them as far as the outdoor storage and use of the driveways, they've let, they've informed you of all this?
Yes.
Okay.
Does he have to have another fire inspection or he'll?
Yes, his next stop. So anybody got anything?
I don't.
Okay, so what we're doing tonight then is we would approve his business on the condition, well, pending the fire marshal inspection and approval of opening the business.
Okay.
So you'll have to get in touch with them, let them know that you're ready to go through our process and it's time for you to have their inspection, it's a simple little process.
Kind of do a walk around and? Okay.
Usually that's what he does, yeah.
That's the last thing?
That's your last step, that's what you gotta do. If you're having the sign changed, putting your own sign, that's when you have to have a building permit. I misread the notes from the office. You would have to get a building permit, which you can do through here, you can see Becky for that as well. You could do it online on our website.
Okay.
But in order to change or do a new sign, you do have to have that.
Okay, um, he is going to keep both of his signs that are there and then I will be adding an additional sign. So we won't be taking any of his signs down, because he is still in half of the building.
That's a lot of signage in that little building.
Is there any stipulation there?
Well, you can only cover so much of a window, I don't know about this exterior of the building. We do overall that when you're ready to do that.
Okay.
Because like I said before, you can even put up a sign.
Right, yes, I thought that was what was gonna be discussed tonight as well. About like what it required, um, what I was required to do for a sign. I'm not ready to put one up yet, so.
I'm gonna check out what we got here, I don't, I don't know Mike, but I know that is a really small building.
It is small.
He has two signs, correct?
Oh yes, one in the front and one in the back.
And where, where are you looking to put signs like that?
On the Fulton Street, um, on the one side of the bay door.
And that's the only place you'd be placing them?
Um, yes, correct, at the moment, I haven't really approved anything with him, um, I haven't really, um... Like, I don't have a plan for it yet, sorry.
Okay, that's all right.
I was trying to think of what to say.
So I guess we'd be looking more at like what size is your sign, where exactly is it gonna hang?
Right.
How much space in the building will you be taking?
I believe that-
Are you talking 13.12?
What was that?
I don't know if it'd be in general standards or not, that's, I was kinda looking for the width permit maybe.
Did you say that was 13.1?
13.12.
That or 13.7.
What about you tonight, does it break its own?
I'm reading the whole thing right now.
Okay, so-
Because there's a whole bunch of other variables.
The total sign area of a building mounted sign shall not exceed 10% of the signable area of the building facade occupied by the use associated with a, with the sign.
That's why I asked him, how much of the building are you going to occupy? Is this a mixed business now, the two of you are doing everything together? Or you're working on this side of the building, he's working on that side of the building?
Correct, yes.
Okay, you would take his frontage of what area he's got designated and leased to him and that's how you will figure your signage?
Yeah, to him.
To him.
Yes.
And actually Wyatt's might even reduce a little bit, because he's losing part of the face of his building.
That's true.
Would he have to make his smaller sign? Make him take down a sign?
See what the math comes out to, well, how much space he's got, he may, he may be under what he's got that he could use as far as space, so it may just work out as okay, now you're in proportion with what the size of your frontage is.
But he still owns the entire building though, I'm just renting.
But you're going to be the business working out of that part of the building.
Yeah, you're running business.
Okay.
Well, when he comes in to do the sign, will Becky be able to give him all the, uh?
Yeah.
Specs?
Looks like they've got 30 feet. If I'm looking at that card, it's on Fulton Street. But depending on the size of Wyatt's sign.
Wyatt's sign won't have anything to do with his sign.
Are you talking the setback or the width?
The width of the building.
Okay.
So you need the height of the building, get square footage of the frontage and then take your signage formula and base it by what his square footage is.
Do you know how tall it's from?
I would say possibly 10 to 12 feet. Wait, no, that doesn't sound right. I'm trying to do it up, up for visual.
Those are the garage doors.
Because I don't think the office part of it is as tall-
Right.
-as the shop part in the back.
Right, I wanna say the bay doors are probably approximately 12 feet, so it might be 15 feet tall. That's a very rough estimate.
So 450 square feet divided by 12? Or maybe divided by 2?
Does that sound right?
I didn't do the math.
25.
What did you, what did you say?
So if it's 15 times 30, it's 450 square feet, divided by 2 would be 225 square feet.
Yeah, 225.
So then what, what do you say is fine?
You can activate 10% of that.
So it would be 22 square feet, what sign, does that sound right?
Sounds big.
Yeah. So 22, I mean it would be-
It's a 4 by 5?
4 by 5.
Yeah, 4 by 5.
Yeah, so it'd be a 4 by 5 sign, so I guess it doesn't sound all that huge, a little bit, but not enormous.
We can double check all of that when you come in for your permit for the sign.
Okay.
When you bring in your building permit and get ready for your sign, but that math is sounding, if I'm reading this correctly.
And he can find it online too, right?
Yes.
So you can find it online, he breaks it down.
Okay.
Okay, so now we-
What section was it, 13.1?
Uh, 13.
Seven, I believe, is the right one.
Yeah, so 13, yes, so I guess I'll have to look through.
Okay.
Okay, so we've discussed the signage, we know what's going on with the building, there's no changes being made. Anything else? Okay, we need another motion.
All right, oh, motion to approve sketch plan application for 74130 Fulton, CTR Customs with pending approval from a fire inspector.
Okay, sounds good.
Support.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome to our made up.
Thank you, I appreciate it very much.
I have some papers that you have to sign. Except I don't have three copies of it. What's that one? I'm doing that. I probably need three copies of this. I'm gonna run and make some copies.
You want me to make them?
Huh?
You want me to make them?
Okay, let me do that.
Yeah.
I need two copies of that.
Just coming around.
That should do it.
That's it?
This one's hard. Chase, if you want, go ahead and come on up here and get them started.
Okay.
Well, it doesn't actually have a signature spot, so if you want to just sign down in here and I'll sign next to you, we can do three of these and three of those. This one is actually for you, so you can, you can sign and go sign.
Just copy here, Richard.
Thank you. Doesn't matter. Yeah, read the screen, yep. I think this is also a copy for you to keep.
Okay.
Just one signature. That one.
Just on the bottom, are you sure?
Yeah. That way we know everything is crossed and taken care of. Thank you very much. All right, you have your copies?
Yep.
You are all set and ready, make sure no more Facebook posts until you are completely approved.
Okay, got you, and then do I need to come back for another meeting here after the approval from the fire marshal?
No.
Okay.
No, you'll pull up and see Becky.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, good luck.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
Yeah, you don't have to.
Hey, you guys are good.
Only we enjoy your company.
Have a good night.
Oh, I got the one that I had ten times, so thank you. Okay, we are now on the discussion for Franklin Street with the land management.
Okay. I was hoping Brian would be here, but it doesn't really matter anyway, uh, because they keep talking about a lateral plan and stuff like that.
Right.
You know, lateral plan, um, the plan I, the original plan's what I'm after, okay? But the second plan I have showed 28 lots, okay? That one would be what a lateral plan would look like, okay? In other words, and if you based the zoning or whatever it is you wanna call it, um, I would, I would lose 10 lots, okay?
Okay.
Then I would be allowed to put two of those back, so my net loss would be eight. Okay, but the layout would be, would be the same. This, so you go understand, everyone saw that other plan, I don't see it laying on the table anymore. But it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter, if you take a look at it, okay? Basically, that's the type of layout I would end up having, okay? And so it'd be very simple to say, uh, to draw a lateral plan, all you'd have to do is take those things and divide it nine into, you know, into seventies, you know, and give you, uh, it would give you, I think, six. Anyway, the bottom line, I'd lose 10 altogether, okay? And I'd be able to put two of those back, which means some of my lots then would be bigger than 74, because I can't, you know, that's the layout that would have to be, okay? So consequently, that doesn't, that may or may not act, I mean, that's what a lateral plan would look like. So if you said, I wanna see a lateral plan, it'd be like that and it'd just be 10 lots, 10 less lots, okay? So what you'd just simply do is, you know, if that's nine lots along here, you divide that by seven, you end up with six, so I lose three on one side, three on the other side, two on, and, okay, you guys have a total of 10. And so that would be your lateral lot. What, what it really amounts to, and I think I tried to make it clear, is the first one I brought in, that's it. When I say that's it, I, there's nothing else I can do that, that have, say, attached garages and, you know, what I wanna do, okay? What, what I think. Unfortunately, there's no real zoning ordinance that I, you, you people are stuck, I mean, there's the ordinance, you do this, you do that, blah, blah, blah. If I do this and I do that, blah, 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 there's no way that's not feasible, not even remotely feasible, okay? So you would almost have to really reject the plan. I mean, in other words, it'd be up to you to say, okay, we really love the project, we want the project, okay? We like it, we like the layout, but it doesn't mean I'm zoning. Now, there can be contract zoning, but a contract zoning, I did that out.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, you got that, so it simply would be, here it is, this is what I'd like to do, this is what I can do. How the mechanics of it is, I don't know, I've always done it under a PUD, but you have a PD, you're, it's not a planned unit development, okay? So you would have the option of saying, yes, I want it, or I don't want it. It's as simple as all that. If you want it, I guess there's a mechanical way to do it, that you don't have to go to change the zoning ordinance, you don't have to do this, you don't have to do that, I don't know if anybody looked closely, you know, at that. But the bottom line of the story is, that project, there's no way, there's no way I can do anything that would comply with the zoning ordinance way it is right now, make it economically feasible for me to build, okay? So if I wanna build, okay, then, and, and one other thing too, the, when I go to the 31 lots, the cost of the cost for me to develop lots, and now remember condo projects, you have to put the sod and grab, and you have to have a, a, what do they call it?
Landscape plan.
Landscape plan, I mean, you can have all that stuff, because all that's included.
Right.
Right.
Okay, so basically you don't have just a raw lot, let's say a raw lot with $60,000 to, to do, and you know, I wanna go ahead and do this, I wouldn't have to put sod in and sprinkling and all that kind of stuff. But a condo you do, okay? And the planning commission is in there, you know, they'd like to see what I'm gonna do for landscaping and stuff like that.
Yeah.
So that's what this all amounts to. So if you don't wanna do any of this, obviously, there's no. I mean, we'll have to, since the first one was basically what I was after and then the other one was just, okay, gives you an idea of what would transpire, okay? So the bottom line would be, the planning commission either basically says yes or no. If they say yes, how can you do it? I don't understand the, the, uh, contract zoning. I think from what I, from what I gathered, from this reading of that, that this is what I asked for and you say yes or no. I mean, it's probably pretty much as simple as that, I think. There might be some other, I'm sure there's a stack of papers about that thing that would tell you all. But that is an overview, so the bottom line is there would be no option but for you people to, to say yes or no on that particular project. And if it is yes, how do we do it?
No, on the 31 houses.
Yeah.
Which we did turn down.
Right.
Well, he didn't turn it down.
We had asked for the parallel plan.
Yeah, yeah, right.
This really didn't cover that.
Right.
So I was told that you were bringing something for us this evening.
No, no, well, more or less it would be, because it's laying right there, just, we'll just split it up a little different. I mean, that would be what you, this is what you'd be after. That's a type of thing that would happen, because that, the layout of the land, okay, isn't like long and skinny or even square, it's sort of oblong and, or octagon, but not octagon, but anyway. Longer than his wife.
I already tanked her.
I tanked her, I tanked, I, uh, I'm, my age is starting to get here. But anyway, the bottom line is, there, there wouldn't be anything else. I mean, I wouldn't come up with anything other than what's there, because a parallel plan, the way the lot is, because it's an infill. Okay, obviously, you know, because it's what's left over, you can get that in big cities and all over the place and you try and make something work on this particular piece of property, but the way it's zoned, it won't. So the planning commission has to do something or just say no. I mean, there's not, you don't have a lot of options.
But if we're reverting back to the 31 houses plan?
Yeah, just do that one.
We've already told you that wouldn't work. That plan did not work, which was why we'd ask for the parallel plan. And this is what you brought, but we let you know that this, this didn't cover everything that was in there.
Right, so basically, the answer is no.
At 31?
It's a 31.
31 is no, and the 28 would be no too, because that doesn't-
It's not, this is not a full site plan though.
No, 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 but it's what the parallel plan would look like, is what I'm saying. I'm not gonna keep spending money on engineering or, or that type of thing when all, when I know that it's not gonna fly. I've gotta come in with something, okay, uh, that, that I know positively will work, but it will still want me to buy it, in other words, then you go to, well, you know what you go to, you just go back, go to the court. And basically, that's, that's basically where we're at, so I gotta bring in whatever, and I probably won't go to, I'm not gonna do it with this, I want to be in the plan.
Okay.
So, because this was, I was a little concerned that maybe my costs were getting a little high anyway, on 31 lots.
Okay.
And I'm thinking in terms of more affordable housing type of thing, you know, rather than be $400,000, I need something less.
Okay.
And then we can work it, work on that. But you won't need a parallel plan, because you know it won't work, okay?
With, not with 31 houses?
No, but, but I'm saying if there's 50, 60, or 70, or whatever the case might be, I can tell you that won't work either.
Right.
So the next time I come back, we will, we'll have to, you all start with the planning commission, then you go to the ZBA and then you take it from there. So that's basically where we're at. So I, but I do need an official turn down, I need this in. I don't think you turn it down and said, uh, we're gonna bring back more information or something. So you're saying we're formally turned down?
It's gonna be up to the board, 31, we've already discussed it with the planner. He let us know that 31 houses would not fit there, the plan that he brought in did not fit within the ordinances, so.
But when he bought the property, it was zoned multi originally, right?
Yeah, but even multi, uh, might, they could find ways to reject that too, so.
There's still only so much space that he can use, there's, there's only so many houses that-
If he switches it back to multi, isn't that gonna create a lot more damage?
He didn't change the zoning.
Well, I'm just saying, because when he bought the property, it was multi originally.
Yeah, but when you change the zoning, I already had to throw it that up. Uh, the only way I, I didn't have an opportunity to come in and give my piece, why I wouldn't have wanted it, but because it's done through a loose pay, I've already had it turned, so I mean, in other words, you can't go back, because that's the way it's zoned right now, okay? Even though it's not zoned that, well, it is zoned that way, on, on the, uh, the update zoning map. But anyway, the bottom, it was zoned that way, but you do have the power of rezoning even by a jet. Okay, that much I found out. Which at least that took a time, I could have, maybe we could have done something to the right dollars, probably too late. But, so from here on out, it has to be, I'll be back, but-
We hope so.
Yeah, but it's not gonna be, it's gonna be a whole lot more than 31, okay? So we're going to, and it'll still be a condo project. I did investigate, I did investigate apartments, you know, how many I could get in there.
Okay.
How many that I wouldn't have really much of a problem getting, uh, and I think I came up with like 74 units. Apartment rentals would be one, two, I think I had a couple, few bedrooms in there. But like personally, um, that's, I'm after a condo project, I'm after something I have in Romeo. I have, I have one I wanna be bringing in and I do have in Romeo also that you could take a look at and say, hey, this is what this looks like after 40 some years, okay? But it's the same conceptual idea of what it might look like 40 years later. So it will be something else. It, I'm not gonna, I don't think I'm, I'm going to the apartment business, I don't, I'm not there.
I don't quit me there.
Okay, but it will be a condo project.
Okay.
Okay, and I know you don't have one in town, and I don't think you have any zoning really that you can, that I can wrap my arms around to do, I've looked under that, I've looked under townhouses, I've been all through your zoning, okay? And there's really nothing that would support something reasonable that would be economically feasible to build. So, and if I benefit officially, I'll put this, uh- So and and if I benefit officially, this is turned down already, then I don't need to re-ask it again.
Do we have to actually make that a vote? We have to, we have to turn down this thirty-one as a vote?
Yeah, I think we do.
Okay, so then it's before the board to make a decision on, for instance, thirty-one house. Project that we have already discussed with the planner, we all need a motion there.
So a motion to approve?
I think Jeff has actually increased it to like thirty-four.
Thirty-one, there's thirty-one lots.
So it's, is it, is that, that's what he's doing, he's in motion to approve and and we're making our decision from there, right? I don't, I don't, I I'm not sure how this would be.
You're either accepting it or rejecting it.
But it has to be a vote.
That's what Jeff's looking for, yes.
And does it have to be a roll call vote?
We don't.
What was the address here again? We're just calling Franklin Street, aren't we?
Yeah, Franklin Street project, right?
Yeah.
There's no, there's no.
There's no actual.
Address.
Hopefully, it'll be thirty-one and some other one, so we'll see.
So if we turn you down on the on the thirty-one lots, then what is, what you're gonna come back with smaller scale?
Yeah, it'll be affordable housing, in other words, I gotta downsize my unit size, it won't be any garages. Uh, because the way that the way that property is laid out, it's the shape of it. I've spent a lot of time trying to figure out what, I can't do anything, I brought in a forty, that was just for conversation purposes. A forty-two lot duplex project, but I didn't bring it formally to the planning commission because. I wasn't any better off with that than I was with the thirty-one, even though it was forty-two compared to thirty-one. The way of the prop in it was duplexes, okay, if you remember right. Uh, it, the layout of the property wasn't economically feasible to even build a forty-two, even though it was. Uh, well, eleven units, uh, three, one, another, uh, nine, nine dozen, uh, units. It it still wasn't working, okay? And I think the reason I'm stuck on the thirty-one because it is a unique layout, it's, you know, blah, blah, blah. Because I'm gonna have to get an arm and leg for the lots, okay, it would cost me so much of development, was right. But seventy-five apartment buildings in there, or fifty condo units, or thirty-one units. Like that one there, the reason I even brought that in as forty-eight was the fact of the simplicity of that particular layout compared to the other one. Now, when we're talking about when when you start having curves in the road and cul-de-sacs and stuff, there's a lot more manholes and. There's things that make this cost more money, okay? So consequently, if the number of units has an has an effect because. Uh, just because I had forty-two units compared to thirty-one units. It wouldn't have been any more economic, it would have been about the same to develop. Get to sell the units, you know what I mean, for development purpose, I could save a little bit, but would you rather have an individual lot? Or would you rather live in a duplex? Okay, don't get me wrong, I'm not saying everybody don't wanna live in a duplex, but I mean, I'm cutting the number down. So I would have a harder time selling them. And so other, or you go into, you know, uh, you know, low-cost housing, I mean, a condo project, but not. Sixteen or seventeen hundred square foot buildings or eighteen, some of those are, the smallest one is fourteen hundred feet. And and I had a garage, but you just can't make that work. I mean, you can, I made it work there, and because I think it's a unique layout, I don't have. I think I could get more per square foot for my house because my lot would be worth a little more money, okay? But that layout, the second layout would cost me a less. Okay, but it wouldn't cost me necessarily less per unit. Well, that would have cost me less per unit, that's for sure, okay? But you can see there's a lot of dead space here and so on, or that that isn't being utilized, once they dead this space up here and so on. So if you had, if you had to follow the the plan for sure. You know, the zoning ordinance for sure, it just wouldn't work. I mean, I I I I can't do it, in fact, I've asked several times about the sewage lift pumps too, what their capacity are. Now, that was fifty years ago, so the notes were put in, and I don't know what, I mean, with the thirty-one units, do they have to be upgraded? I mean, I, there's questions I gotta have, that I gotta do yet, that I haven't for myself to make sure it's economically feasible. But number one, is you gotta say, well, I, we approve the project, but what does that mean? That means I go ahead and more depth with the engineering, to give you an idea. The water mains, for example, according to plans that that I have, the water mains, so on, are six feet deep. Where I would, uh, wanna hook my sewer tube is eight feet deep, and then there's a little difference in elevation, so it was. But I'd have to bore under, well, that's no big hairy deal, people bore.
But see, that's part of what we were saying with this plan, is that when you came forward with this plan. You didn't include anything as far as the water hookups, um, no one had been in contact with the D P W. The streets were not wide enough for emergency vehicles. This plan just didn't finish off what we needed in order to approve or disapprove.
Well, number one, it for me just. Look at, I've already, I mean, I, those are things I gotta find out. Okay, but I'm not gonna be, I'm gonna spend the money on it, but I wanna make sure that I go, I'm gonna have a project, a viable project. Or at least pretty sure of the outcome if we do something else, okay? And so anyway, originally, it will work, okay, but what if it doesn't? Well, obviously, if I can't do that, then I gotta go to a sewage lift pump. In other words, there might be problems, you have the layout, but there might be problems that I'll have once I dig real deep. Okay, that maybe I'll say, you know what, that that particular project isn't economically feasible neither. But my preliminary estimate is that it will be.
That it will work.
It will work.
With the thirty.
Can we give him?
With the thirty-one.
From Ross from our water commissioner and our sewage.
And he he came into a meeting, and he did say they just upgraded the pump station with a million and a half dollar upgrade to the whole pump station. And he didn't think it would be a problem, and one of the earlier meetings back in March, I believe it was. For for the lift station for that area.
In a council meeting?
No, it was here, the zone board.
We didn't have Ross come in.
Yeah, I wouldn't have been here.
We didn't have Ross come in.
When did we meet him?
I don't recall that at a council meeting either.
Maybe we met him then, but I just.
Might have.
It was, it wasn't a council meeting, it was a a general meeting.
Oh, it was a general meeting, yeah, because I was there, I was there, yeah.
Yeah, it was kind of a general meeting. Right, right, it wasn't that the planning commission here.
Yeah, it was a general.
It was just a general meeting, I didn't even recall it.
Because he wanted something to happen with the land, and we're just just trying to, because after, you know, someone reached out to him originally. Now, he's just trying to provide something because he's like his lane's in. And then, you know, obviously, it's changed what you can do with it since you bought it. He's just trying to figure out what he can do with it at this point.
Well, we've gone several times to the planner and discussed and showed him all the plans that were brought in, and to this point, we don't have. A plan that finishes off what he had asked you for.
What what the pro, okay, but what he's doing, he's he's the planner, okay? And he looks at the building, at the plan, at the zoning.
Correct.
Okay, he doesn't have a lot of options, you people have options, he don't, this, he interprets, he says, this is what it is. Remember when I asked you about, is, what's the ten percent mean? I mean, could it mean that, remember that layout?
Right, that's what you're saying, you get two bonus houses, once it gets to twenty-eight or twenty-six, you go to twenty-eight.
Thirty-one is, you know, in other words, because you have on the thirty-one plans, it tells the exact square footage of every lot. Now, one of those lots is seventy-four foot wide, but if you take all those thirty-one lots. And and if I got a ten percent bonus, those lots would fit. They wouldn't, but they wouldn't, they wouldn't be according to your zoning ordinance. Okay, in other words, the square footage works, but the front footage doesn't work. And not every lot has a, obviously, eighty-four hundred feet. Some lots have, I think, one or two might have twelve thousand feet, some have seven thousand feet. You know, in other words, you've seen what it is.
He was trying to make a unique neighborhood instead of just a box. A lot of it come down to what, they're all mismatched in size.
I never heard back from the planners on the paperwork that he had submitted to last time. Um, I was only told today that he was gonna be at this meeting, so we can either do as he's asking. And give him approval or an opposing, or we can hold and wait and talk to the planners.
Well, the planner, like I say, the planner, I don't understand zoning that well, but I do, I mean, I got the zoning thing, just like you all folks have it. And if you go strictly to the zoning, neither one of these plans are gonna work. Now, it don't matter what I bring in, isn't going to work, okay? Because twenty lots is not gonna work, okay, or twenty-one lots maybe, but say twenty lots. It just, this isn't gonna work, I mean, from a monetary point of view.
Feasibility for you.
Feasibility, because I don't wanna build million-dollar houses in there, that ain't gonna fly, we should eight hundred thousand.
Your lot goes to a hundred grand instead of sixty grand, you know?
Right, and then there's a relationship, in other words, you're trying to sell a house for two hundred thousand, you got a hundred thousand dollars in improved lot. I'm not saying that the condo lot would be a hundred, but maybe the other one would be eighty or something like that, I'd have to get, for example. But if you build, even if you wanna build a three hundred thousand dollar house, they only give you two hundred and twenty thousand dollars to build a house. Well, one-third of that is the lot. Well, that don't fly. You know, that, that just doesn't fly, I mean, not here, now, if this was Rochester, and I could build some million-dollar houses. Fine, you know, seventy-eight foot lots or whatever the case is, would work, they tear houses down. All day long, okay? That ain't gonna happen with a swamp on one side, D D W on the other, a a trail that someone got murdered on. And only got six houses button against it, you know what I mean? So consequently, this isn't someplace that if I was one of them, I'd spend six or seven hundred thousand dollars. I'd wanna put my house there. Pardon?
Maybe four hundred thousand new houses.
Well, yeah, maybe four, well, not, you can't even do four, we're gonna do four with the one we got. What I don't know is the make, the 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 tool that you use, if you if you approve it, can you approve it?
I think these are what are the ones.
To McKenna. And the letter that was given to all of us.
All of you.
As well, I believe, he said that we have re, we have received a revised site plan drawing for the Orchard Grill Meadows site condominiums. We have completed our review and have identified items that are required to fulfill the preliminary site plan. For a completed site plan, many of which can be submitted for preliminary approval at a later date, once feasible. Once feasibility of the project is confirmed, but we weren't even given the information that he had asked for in order to decide feasibility.
Well, the the problem is, if you stick to the zoning ordinance per se. You know, in other words, they talk about twenty percent open space, you kidding? That that can't happen, not twenty percent, okay? Uh, in fact, if you really, I don't surprise that, that that ordinance amazes me because it even says something about. Uh, the twenty percent should be in the middle of the project. I could, even apply that with a little, oh, anyway, yeah, it's. So basically, if you did wanna, then there there's a magnet, there's a mechanic, a magnet, a mech.
Mechanism.
A mechanism that you would use to, I mean, if you approve it, I guess you're the planning commission.
You can approve it, wanting to make sure all that other stuff.
Gets done.
Gets to you, you know what I mean, for final approval, but he just needs something to know that. Keep investing into this project to move forward with a different idea.
I mean, your state permit's gotta be pulled, I mean, there's a lot of things have to be pulled.
Nothing was included, though, that Jeff required for us to make a preliminary decision.
Well, okay, now, that's what, but that's what I'm after, okay? That's what I'm after, because I'm gonna have to do something.
That's understandable, but we had asked for specific information to be turned in in order for us to make that decision.
Well, this is, I would do, if 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 the thing here said, we're we're on board with it, let's just say you are, okay? Uh, we have, we approve it, but we can't approve according to this, maybe the Z B A could, but the ordinance even says it can't be. Well, that, that, you can so, anyway, but even the ordinance says. You, I can't even, if you approve it, then my next step, you could approve it, okay? The next step would would, because it isn't the zoning, I'd go to the Z B A, but I think the ordinance even says you can't.
You have to have a hardship in order to go to the Z B A.
Right, right, so that that's not gonna happen.
But you're wanting us to vote on something that we clearly do not have all the information to, we haven't made any of the. Requests that were made by McKenna in order for us to tell you whether we're on board or not.
Well, okay, let's, okay, let's do it this way then, I am on board with thirty-one lots. If 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 I turn all this in, in other words, I'm gonna spend another few thousand bucks, I'm not gonna spend any, but I'm gonna do it on a different. Deal, in other words, because I know that this can be rejected, even if I do everything that's here, because the parallel plan. Is what's gonna kill it, because the parallel plan's only gonna give you twenty lots.
But we continue to give you information that we need brought to us because obviously, we are trying to work with you. But there's certain guidelines that we have to stay within, and you're you're not helping us to meet those at all.
Well, part of the, part of the problem is, is is the density type of thing, is this something that that you folks say? I I really don't know, I mean, I, the the parallel plan, I can easily submit that back to you, that takes a pair of the parallel plan.
But it needs to include all the information that our planner had asked you to have in a parallel plan. This letter was given to you and all of us, he wrote this on July ninth, and it was before this meeting came.
Right, right, well, actually, he wrote one before that.
The thirty-one units, he wanted the parallel grandma? Or is it this one here?
He had submitted the thirty-one. And when he was given this information, that we needed this information, that was when he turned this in. But it didn't include any, anything that we needed.
Because it's because he wanted to keep with the thirty-one that already has the information in it.
I really don't see how thirty-one are gonna work, we're willing to see what he has to offer on a parallel.
No, I mean, that that is what I have to offer.
The thirty-one, he has all the density numbers.
But you didn't offer the parallel plan, you didn't, all you brought in was this drawing, and it didn't include anything.
Okay, I'll go ahead and have him, uh, take and slice some lots up, because that's, that is the parallel plan, more or less. That's what, that's what I'm gonna end up with.
But it's not a finished plan.
But he's not looking to get that, he's looking to get the thirty-one, that's what he's looking to get rejected or say yes or no on, is what it comes down to today. He's not looking, you know what I mean, it goes back to the ori, the the letter before this one, when he came into the meeting before, when McKenna originally. Looked at the thirty-one units.
That is, this is the.
This is where this twenty-eight unit that he was trying to change.
No, the twenty, this twenty-one unit came after this letter. This letter explained what we needed this to include, and it did not.
But that was because of thirty-one units originally.
That, there is, okay, if you, there, I have the letter for the thirty-one too, and it's the same letter. Okay, the letter hasn't changed.
And he continued to not turn in the information that we're requesting.
Just on twenty, but the thirty-one, we already had a meeting when the.
Right, yes, arms here.
And we said no then.
Okay, so say no now.
We've already let you know that thirty-one are not going to work, but that we wanted you to submit a parallel plan that would. Help us to move forward with your project.
But would it move forward with the project using thirty-one lots?
No, no.
No, we already told you.
Then, then, okay, then just turn it down. Don't make me have to come back there time and time again. Don't make me have to come back there time and time again and waste your time.
We haven't made you come back, you continue to-
Right, right, but I, I got officially turned down. No, if I get a roll call vote and turn me down. Because, because it's not gonna happen with thirty-one lots. Then don't matter what I bring back, cause I'm saying-
The planner was here and explained to you.
No, what?
You guys are the ones that decide, not the planner, that's what he's trying to get at.
The planner was here and explained how the ordinance is working. We all took a look at it and sat in this meeting and made the decision that thirty-one lots would not work.
We did not do a roll call vote.
We did no roll call vote.
We went to came back the last two times, if you guys would've done the roll call vote, that was the whole reason we-
Because you told us that you were coming back.
But I wanna see, but, but it won't, nothing else will work, the thirty-one is it so, if, and if you say, we're not gonna approve thirty-one lots no matter what you bring back. Because-
That's not what we're saying.
I know that's what you're saying, but the bottom line, you already know that that's the minimum amount of lots that I need. Is that, that, I mean, I'm telling you that, that's the minimum amount of lots that I need.
They don't want you to go into a different direction, it's what he's trying to explain.
So all you gotta do, if you want that, I can, I'll do the whole dagum thing. I mean, that, that's not a problem, but if, if you got your mind made up that thirty-one lots isn't gonna work, then why, why do I have to keep coming back here? Because I won't, there's nothing else.
Because you chose to come in, you have requested we bring in these things.
Okay, well, then give out the roll call vote on the thirty-one lots, because it wasn't what I done last time.
If I can interject real quick, that is pulled minutes from February twenty-one.
Yes.
Site plan review, after discussion among commission members and Brian Keasy from McKenna, item will be brought back at future meeting once concerns are addressed.
Right.
Which is what I said, we've been, we've asked for additional information that's not being brought to us.
I'm asking a simple question, if I, why do I wanna go and, and bring a roll call vote?
Kevin, let's do a roll call vote on the thirty-one house plan unit that was originally submitted by Fritz for the Franklin Street project. We need it either approve or oppose.
Do we need a motion?
He's gonna call for, he's gonna call all of us, and we will make our vote.
Okay. Okay, roll call vote. Patadusek?
No.
Shaw?
No.
Lemieux?
I, am I voting on this?
You remember.
You're here, so yes, you were voting.
So yes, okay, no.
Grand, no. Patterson?
No.
Okay, now, I'll give the minutes for that. Let me take it from there. Because that, that was the whole idea behind it, was thirty-one lots. I mean, the rest of this stuff, a parallel plan, parallel plan's gonna show you less lots, and I can't live with less lots.
Okay.
And so that's basically the story.
Thank you for your time.
Yep.
Thank you for your time.
We'll be back, like old Arnold says. Well-
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Have a good night.
Yep.
Well, they should not go like that.
Is, okay, is he backing you into a corner?
Pretty much, yes.
There's more land on that thing though, see, and I'm not so familiar with it, like that was a perfect song.
Which is why we called our planner, which is, uh, McKenna, and they actually sent someone out here to let us know what he could do, which is why I called for the approval or disapproval on the original site plan.
Right, right, I get that, yeah.
That was already turned down, and he was given the reasons why, and he was given a list of information that needed to be brought in. And this is what he brought, and it did not contain-
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I got a good explanation, that was good, it did. But here's what I'm saying, doesn't he have more land? This is a detention area, is there anything that could be dropped?
No.
He doesn't have in this park, does he have to have a park in his land?
I thought that was in when he originally came and did-
But thirty-one, it seemed a lot smaller, a little, a park, it seemed like a park group, I, I don't, is it thirty-one?
I know, but it's on like, if there's still more land, why is he?
No, there's only twenty-one units in this one, and this is what he's claiming to be a-
Well, twenty-one or twenty-eight, so I have twenty-one.
I, that's what McKenna's letter said was twenty-eight, but when he actually submitted this, it's twenty-one.
Yeah, it's twenty-one.
Oh, well, this is twenty-eight.
This is twenty-eight.
Oh, just, I only saw twenty-one.
Yeah, on the next row.
Yeah.
That other row.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I thought that park, the original thirty-one, just had a couple, real tiny little parks, so.
Okay, is he backing, backing us down to do something?
He wants us to accept his original plan, which does not-
Original plan.
But is he, I mean, is he almost like threatening that he's gonna sell it to, to, I don't know, the land to somebody else, what?
He can do whatever he wants to.
Well, yeah, he can, that's true, yeah, I just, I, I was like, okay, why are we not gonna have garages? Who wants a condo without a garage, a condo that costs?
No, I thought this was the guy that's in the car garage.
No, I thought it's like the new ones, when he does seventy-four units.
Well, what happened is he threw three more options at you, and kept asking you guys to approve it.
Yeah, yeah.
He gave you the option of the parallel-
Now, who were these guys, who were, who was him, the speaker?
He's a, uh-
That's Jeff Fritz.
That's Jeff, I know the first name, it's not Fritz.
Fritz.
That is his last name?
Yeah, that's a Fritz.
The next guy was his son, grandson?
No, he's one of the project developers, he's like-
Okay.
But they use a grandson.
And then Steve is his older brother.
Okay, and then Steve, okay, cause I know these names, but I've never, never seen them in my repenties.
And I could swear after the meeting with, with Brian, that, like when we asked him for additional stuff, and we told thirty-one, I thought that's why he came with these other plans, is cause he said he would rework it.
Yes, he was given the same letter that we all have a copy of.
I mean, why'd he go through all that if he was never gonna go away from thirty-one anyways?
Right, that's, I'm not so sure. And now he's saying he's gonna come up with seventy-four units.
Yeah, I don't know where those numbers are.
I don't either.
But I, I was pretty sure he was gonna come back with something small, and I thought that's why we were spending the time looking at this, and then all of a sudden, now, well, that's not even doable.
We never told him that this didn't work.
No.
We did tell him that thirty-one did not work, it just would not fit within our ordinances. We never told him this wouldn't work, we told him this site plan, this, this drawing.
And after talking with Brian, that maybe that twenty-eight, twenty-eight still wouldn't work, we had to get down to twenty-six or something.
Yeah, Brian really didn't-
But we said with, maybe with the bonus, that twenty-eight, now he's coming and saying, well, if I use a bonus, I can get up to thirty. It's like, no, that bonus was maybe gonna allow twenty-eight. It wasn't gonna allow you to get two more in there.
Right.
Okay, I, I, it's silly, I thought I remembered it being talked about the time.
But another thing he proposed to you, you can't do it, is, like, say, he gave you the three options. You do the parallel plan, you do the condo plan with all thirty-one sites, which you guys already said wouldn't work. And then he threw in apartments.
Yes.
So depending on how many-
But he doesn't wanna do that.
Well, he said if it was feasible and he could work it in, he could do that. But it's not gonna be feasible, because if he's putting multi-units in, depending on how many units, he's gonna have additional parking. He's eating up his lot space that he's so desperately trying to attain, to use it up in parks.
Well, I think he, with the thirty-one lots, that's what he had set in his mind, that he can make money.
He can.
That's his, yeah.
And that's his, you know, his intention, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, and understandable.
And he should be, I mean, why would he do that?
It'd be business.
Kind of why he listed do something, and I would be-
Money could still be made with the smaller amount of units that work within our ordinances, I, I-
But I don't think he's seen it that way.
I seen tonight as an attack, do it now or don't.
Right.
Not, oh, I'll come back with more information.
Yeah.
Like he has been, he's saying that we're forcing him to return. And that's not what's going on here.
He said he would come back with a smaller plan.
Four times you told him that.
Yes.
That was what was requested.
Four times, I think, includes the subject you listed. So, but all right, so that's, that's where that went, they should not, they will not all go in that way.
Do you know what he means by a contract zone? Cause I don't quite understand a contract zone.
I don't either, and I had left a message to, um, get some information on that from, um, Brian Keasy.
Does he think it's not like we could just approve it anyway? Was, just political amusement, or whatever, cause we wanted.
That's what he's saying, yeah, that's what he's trying to get at, but we can work on that.
Well, and that's why I also, like I said, I, I made sure that we said we were voting on the original.
Well, kinda, yeah, if you need a copy, I was gonna say, seal the, uh, copier next door.
Okay, this, this subject tonight.
We just wanna review it.
Yeah.
What pages are those that I could, and learn it, cause I've gotta understand it more. I've gotta understand the, the zones, what zone is this?
Oh, you're talking about in the zoning ordinances?
Yeah, in the, in the book, yeah, that we're gonna be getting another one when we hold up.
People can refer to areas.
Right, I see, it's, it's, it's all gonna change.
Yeah, it's all, yeah.
Do you have this book?
No, I have this, and it's the current, it's not with the changes, cause the changes are not voted in yet.
Right, we, we didn't, uh, we constantly-
Didn't finalize it.
Right, we decided to postpone it so they could look at our addendums to all the ordinances that we changed.
Yeah, okay.
September night, September night, we did.
But, but this, what we're, what's being discussed here tonight, and, well, I'm gonna keep reading the book, cause I've been reading it, and I'm like, oh, I can't find where this would under, may help me understand, but-
He's under the multi-home.
Multi-home, okay.
And then-
Okay, I'll find it.
There's a section in there for condominiums. We're looking through all of that, um, the sizes of his homes, what's, what's allowable. You know, but some of that, I believe, we did change.
Okay, well, maybe he'll be now, here's the new, yeah.
There's changes in there. He, he'll do that.
Yeah, yeah. He didn't hold that man, is this the same, is it the same generation that started the whole Fritz project?
Yes, yes.
Fifty years ago.
There's three phases.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I have one of Fritz's phases.
Well, yeah, we've been here, well, through phase two. Phase one, Franklin Street was already in, we were there, but not everything else, so.
I think Torrey was even phased out, cause I used to live on Torrey, and I think it was Fritz's phase one.
Okay, the cul-de-sac, the, and all these again, okay, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, those are Fritz's homes. And then they went to two.
Okay, yeah.
Madison and, no, Madison is three, I think.
Madison's three.
Is three, yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I, I think he had kinda backed this into a corner.
He tried to, he, you didn't, it didn't happen.
He wasn't, wasn't going to hear that we needed more information in order to make a proper law.
Right.
So, I, I did what he demanded.
Right.
That simple.
I agree.
See it that way too, yeah, okay.
Okay, so that puts us past that one. And that we are gonna do, were you here when we did that the last time? We assigned addresses to-
Do you have the, uh?
This one, is that who this?
Yeah, the panels, again?
No, that's who you guys approved of.
No, that's, that's who we did before.
Yeah.
And this one is gonna be for the, um, bus garage.
Oh, like, is she putting in a third?
No, 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 they're, um, they're putting in electrical, something electrical, a charging system, I believe it is. Becky gave us a-
Which garage?
The bus garage.
Bus garage, for this one?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, no, I have it, I just used it. Becky gave us a whole thing on it.
I didn't get anything.
And, oh, maybe I'm the only one that got something, all right, hold on, where did I put it?
No, I'm sorry.
Um, here it is. Electrical vehicle supply equipment project, bus storage lot at Armada Middle School. And these are all the stipulations and regulations and... I don't have a magnifying glass big enough for this.
What are they, you buy in hand to do?
This one?
That's to put an address to it?
Maxi charger.
Well, they got an electric bus, but I thought that they already had the infrastructure for it, and it's going.
Right.
You know, well, I guess it's been something they've been working on, but now it comes down to D T E says they cannot have it without an address.
Without an address.
Okay.
So the bus garage does not have an address. So we assign addresses in the building.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
And the addresses-
Yeah, right, yeah, but you're, you said you're, address for me.
But not splitting land or anything?
No, 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 we're just giving a, a piece of property and addresses all the way, so. The addresses to, the address to the north is seven four seven seven eight.
Seven four-
Seven seven eight.
Seven seven eight.
The address to the south is seven four seven two zero. We would pick a number in between those two and assign it to the bus garage.
So between seven, two zero and seven seven eight?
Yes.
Seven thirty? Seven seven. Seven two zero. That's, that's five. Fifty-eight, um... So, um, it's gotta be an even number, correct?
It's on the, if it's on the-
Yes.
Yeah, it has to be, it has to be. Okay, so either go up twenty-eight or thirty?
Seven thirty, seven five?
Yes, I'm sorry, four, seven thirty. So seventy-seven, four is like thirty.
That has to be a motion too, right?
Okay, what's the name of the road exactly?
Armada Center.
Armada Center?
Okay, so I will make a motion to approve that we assign the address of seven four seven three zero to the bus garage at the Armada Middle School.
I'll second that.
Does that work? The bus garage comes in off of Spencer?
That's why I was asking which street.
Is the school's address?
Oh, cause it would have to be their address, not the school's address. You're correct, so it would have... This is Spencer, she's got Spencer right here. It is, we, okay.
I meant seven four seven three zero Spencer?
Change this motion, yes, we are going to assign the address of seven four seven three zero Spencer Street to the Armada Middle School bus garage.
I'll still second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
Motion approved, the address is seven four seven three zero. Seven four seven two zero Spencer Street.
We sure about that now?
Yeah, this time I am, I'm right there.
You're gonna have one very angry superintendent with a dead bus driver.
Yeah, you're right. Okay, so, that finishes off that one. In reports, let me start by saying, excuse my rudeness. We do have a new member on the planning tourism. Yeah, you always join us.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming on.
Yeah, well, that was good, I was seeing what, you know, I wasn't sure what to expect, so, yes. And Kevin, I know, Mike, I know, your first name?
Is Christie.
Christie?
Al.
Al. Okay, okay, yours is written down, why don't you, your name is written down anywhere, it's on here, on my stuff, so.
Oh, on your stuff?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was just Patadusek, well, I'm, I'm the minute, but it's just Al.
Yeah, he's just there.
Just call me Al, you can call me Al, it's a song about it. Trying, trying to be, trying to be somewhat formal here.
Okay.
Okay, so, does anybody have anything else you'd like to discuss tonight?
So when I report to the council, just tell them that we did turn down the Fritz, uh, because I-
I did a roll call vote that turned down this original thirty-one site, or thirty-one house site plan.
Do you have the memo from Ryan back in January?
I'm sure I have it somewhere, but where?
Yeah, I was asking Mike if he had.
Uh, in February, I don't think I did, no.
Okay, cause I didn't give you-
You weren't in Michigan, right?
No, I wasn't in Michigan at the time.
Can we make some copies of some stuff?
What do you got?
Um, the January nineteenth memo, so he can bring that to the next council meeting. And Al needed a copy of us, the zoning, uh, contract zone.
You can take one copy of each of them.
That's the stuff he brought to the last meeting.
This is what Fritz brought.
Right, Fritz brought.
Fritz brought this to us, Fritz brought this to us, that was, uh, I think he wanted us to... I don't know if the words-
He just wanted to say a thing, but-
Well, I don't know if I'm-
If he's only lying, say, or if he's gonna bring it up to the meeting, that he's gonna be, that's the-
I will say, that the one problem I have with his projects is that he thinks he can come here and build what he has in Rome. Because Romeo can accept it, doesn't mean that our ordinance can't accept it.
Right, thank you.
He wants us to bend and allow what he wants.
Right.
And he want, that's what he wanted us to do tonight.
Right.
Was just say that, yes, you can go ahead and do that.
Right.
And it can't happen.
And he knows it.
Rather, he likes the fact that we have a planner, that, that he looks over all of our legalities, makes sure that everything we do is all, all our ducks are in a row.
Right, right.
And Fritz's plan was not in that role.
And, and he did mention other people's names that were on board, he mentioned a board member, a council member.
Right.
Yes, he did, and that was not an official.
No.
No, that was an unofficial, yeah, preliminary, yeah, that was never at a council meeting. No, it was a preliminary.
On the street counter station, yeah.
Oh, he did, he did come here and.
Well, yeah, but, um, it was, yeah, sanctioned by.
No, right, no sanction.
What is that black sheet there?
That's the one that he.
In bold letters.
That's the one that.
Can we get two copies of that, please?
Of this?
Yeah, yeah, so you'll see now which one it are.
Oh, this one, wow, the contract zoning spring institute, Michigan Association of.
I think it must be in my other bag, I tried switching.
I didn't even know he was coming tonight.
I didn't either, I, when I got the discussion on Franklin Street, I meant to get with Becky first name, but I didn't.
Yeah.
And she usually tells me right away, he's either submitted something or not, which tells me he did not. So I talked to her tonight, and she said she didn't have anything, he was supposed to bring something to give to us, to submit to the planning commission. But he knows the procedure, he can bring it here or to Becky, it goes to the plan, it's the way there's a vote, so.
Farmer from July, he was like, well, my, said he wasn't sure what we want, and we said, so if Ryan can do it, he can do it.
Well, he got the letter.
And he's setting on, they aren't. He got the letter, the same exact letter we got from the planner, which is, which I don't wanna be redundant, but it says right here, existing conditions, topographic information at two-foot interval, existing drainage contours and basins, tree surveying inventory, proposed condition, preliminary utility plans for water source stormwater with conceptual approval by the services provided. We continue push for a pedestrian connection to the McCormont Trail, detailed road cross-sections, sidewalk cross-sections, pathway cross-sections, landscape planning, planned signage and street details, example, building elevation drawing depicting proposal building materials and coordinating floor plan draws. He didn't give us any of that.
None, no.
He didn't give us.
Because.
And he got the same letter we got.
He keeps saying that the site plan that we're looking at, that he asked us to open tonight, he keeps saying that that's the answer to that, it was not.
It's not.
It was not.
No. So like, we're asking for more details, so if we said, yes, we approved it, and then that just gets him off the hook and giving us details, right?
That's how I'm looking at it, had we voted yes tonight, it pretty much gives him blank pages to write himself.
Right.
And that's just.
That's, that's not gonna work.
Yeah, that's not what the purpose of this is.
Right.
To kind of.
And he's got the planning that follows in the guidelines, if he's choosing not to follow the guidelines, it, then that's his problem for spending the money. That's right. On proposing a plan that he already knows is outside our guidelines. That's right.
How close is that land that his, he owns to the pond back there?
It's right up against.
It's real close, so it is swampy, right next to it, yeah.
To the east?
I've been there.
Yeah, that's the detention, yeah, that's, that's pretty.
That's city, that's township, or village home, imaginary.
Right, yeah, and I'm aware, I've been here long enough to know it, but I just don't go back there. And I, I thought, well, maybe that pond is dry up some, but then when he mentions swamp.
You see, he first promised, that was supposed to be one of the things, that was supposed to have a aerator in it, and was supposed to be like, oh.
I think I remember that.
A living pond, it didn't happen.
No.
It didn't happen.
It just.
That's.
Yeah.
And also, they turn it, makes him sound like a lot worse, and it was all of a sudden, you know, before the trail was a bonus, you know?
Yeah.
And, you know, so much there was a bonus or a priority, it's today, all of a sudden, the whole thing, especially you mentioned the April thing.
Was that, was he, was that what he was pointing at while he wasted property was back there by the, the trail?
Yeah.
'Cause that was one thing that Brian had pretty much thought we should insist on, was access to that trail, and he's, he keeps just bypassing that altogether.
I'm, I'm curious, I'm curious how that would work anyways, because you can't have people walking right through the condos, 'cause it's association that's private, right? They take their own roads and all that, so. I, I, can we even ask that of them? To open power to the private property of public?
I, I don't know, well, you probably.
I think Brian wanted it basically to just once they're on the trail, they're on the property, period. So Brian was looking at it to be something where his residents had an opening that, you know, here it is, this is for you to enter the trail and use the trail. I think is more what he was looking for. That's a trail done, how'd that go?
Yeah, good, yeah, it was a successful season.
Well, music in the park?
Yeah.
No rain, it never rained out?
Uh, we had one.
Was every one, no, it wasn't, but it really[1628.64]